Good evening, everyone, and thank you for coming tonight, November 16th, 2022, to a City Council meeting of Lost Manos. And tonight, we are going to have Councilmember Ms. Lewis give our invitation. I pray we wouldn't withstand.
Father in heaven, we come to you right now, first of all, giving you praise, honor, and glory for who you are, that you are the master of the universe, that you are the creator of all things. And Lord, we just ask that you would guide the council tonight in our meetings as we make important decisions for our city, for our employees, and that we will be ever mindful of a governance over the city. We thank you for our employees. We thank you for our fighter fires, our police officers, our Public Works Department, our Parks and Recreation, and our administrative staff. Lord, we just ask that you give them all wisdom in what they do. And we just ask that you will oversee our nation, Father, and give all of our elected officials, whether they're at the state level or at the federal level, wisdom in how to guide and lead this country. And we give you praise, honor, and glory, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you. And now, we'll call the meeting to order at 6:01, and we'll ask Police Chief Prezy to lead us in. The Pledge of Allegiance. If everybody can stand.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the record for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And we'll now turn to the City Clerk, Ms. Melanie, for roll call.
Jones?
Here.
Lambert?
Here.
Lewis?
Here.
Law Miss?
Here.
We have a quorum. We'll now take a motion for consideration of approval of agenda. Councilmember Jones?
So moved.
Councilmember Lewis?
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Jones, a second from Ms. Lewis. All in favor?
Aye.
No motions. Agenda has been approved. We now will step down to number five, the Presentations. We've got several nice awards to give out tonight. Okay, we're going to start off with our Outstanding Performance Award from Daniel Freeman. He is not here at this time, so if we can have Chief, the Fire Department, step up This is a certificate of recognition presented to Daniel Freeman, Fire Captain, Lost Manos Fire Department, in recognition of your outstanding performance and dedicated service to the City of Lost Manos and for being named Employee of the Month for October 2022. And we'll present this to Mr. Lala. Appreciate it. And I guess everyone else here knows what they're here for. I'll read the recognition first, and then I'm going to turn it over to the VFW and American Legion to present the flags. So the first one we're going to start off with is the Mercy Springs Elementary, Most Patriotic Elementary School. And if you guys, if you guys would like to come up here.
Come on, Mercy Springs.
Let's get out of the way and read it while they get there with you. All right, so this is a certificate, certificate of recognition from, is presented to Mercy Springs Elementary School, Most Patriotic Elementary School, in recognition of its participation in the Lost Manos Veterans Day Parade and for placing first in the Most Patriotic Elementary School category. And this is going to be your certificate of recognition. Now, I'm going to turn it over to commanders.
On behalf of the American Legion and the VFW in Los Manos, we want to thank you for the participation. We were all, just couldn't believe all of the young people you had. Myrna called me the day before the parade and said, you know, we asked our young people to be in the parade, our students to be in the parade, we thought we'd have 30, but we had 150 that signed up and wanted to come. And she was all concerned, and we told her, bring them on, because we really loved it. Your kids chanting all the way through the parade, how they love veterans is wonderful. We thank you, and hopefully, you'll be back next year with the Air Force.
Oh, by the way, this flag will be posted, displayed for the next year at the elementary school. Thank you, guys. Lost Manos Junior High?
Yeah.
You guys would like to come up here?
That's high. Wait, he said junior high.
This is the certificate of recognition presented to the Lost Manos Junior High School, Most Patriotic Junior High School, in recognition of its participation in the Lost Manos Veterans Day Parade and for placing first in the Most Patriotic School, High School category. Oh, it's Junior High. Is it? Got it. Junior High School. And now, we'll turn it over to, like, Deal.
Come on, Deal.
Come on, Deal.
Get up here. Look at the camera.
And again, for the Junior High, we want to thank the Los Manos Junior High School for doing what they did. They put forth a great parade float, they put forth a great participation in the, in the parade. We want to thank you, and hopefully, we'll see you next year. Remember, it's the Air Force. We, we hope to, we're very hopeful that next year, we have even more students participating, even more people participating. We had 70 entries this year, was an hour and a half was the length of the parade. And so, we want to thank the Junior High School for what you did and what all of the other students did. So, thank you very much, and we hope to see you next year. And there's your flag.
Next up, Pacheco High School. This is a certificate of recognition presented to Pacheco High School, Most Patriotic High School, in recognition of its participation in the Lost Manos Veterans Day Parade and for placing first in the Most Patriotic High School category. You are here to receive. Yep, that's several.
And again, we want to thank the Pacheco High School for their participation again this year and for the great job that you do. And, you know, the, the students coming and, and doing what you do is just, it makes us feel very good about this, the fact that you're honoring the veterans and the veterans are being honored by our young people. So, hopefully, we'll see you again next year.
So, I just wanted to take them, yeah, go Air Force, that's at least two Air Force veterans here. I just wanted to take a moment and say that one of the key things that the commanders and I, as the chairperson, when we put on the veterans parade, we, in this contest especially, is for education and to really have the students, the youth in the community, learn about the importance of our veterans, why it is important to respect the service that they gave, and seeing, especially this year, especially after a two-year hiatus of not being able to have the parade, to see the outpouring of support from the students was, really touched our hearts and let us know that what we're doing with this parade is really making a difference because we're seeing it in the administrators and the leaders of the, the teachers and the leaders of the schools, and it's filtering down to our youth, and that's really what we wanted to do as well. So, just wanted to say kudos to all of you.
Thank you.
Make sure you let Tommy see those.
Thank you. That concludes the Presentations. So, we'll move on to item number six, public forum. Members of the public may address the City Council members on any item of public interest that is within the jurisdiction of the City Council. Includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action will be taken on non-agenda items. Speakers are limited to a five-minute presentation. Detailed guidelines are posted on the Council Chamber Information Table. At this time, I would like to invite the public to come forward and speak and remind those in the council chambers to either turn their cellphones off or silent.
Hello, my name is Claudia Nunez. I've come here before. I would like to read something that I wrote for the City Council. It's, it's funny, but today, it goes with my theme in my poem, "American Flag." We are all supposed to love our American flag. We are supposed to it honor. Why some don't, I stop and wonder. Liberty and justice for all is what it stands for. That we all are not getting liberty and justice, of this I am sure. The City Council members shine us on. In God's eyes and ours, for doing this to us, they are wrong. To do something to help us, please don't wait until something horrible does occur. Because forever, the horror you caused will be in your mind and hearts, and it will reoccur. Okay, we've been fighting about the homeless for years. Nothing has been done. There, I don't know if you guys heard about the ladies that fell down the stairs the other day at the post office. My friend was one of them, and she knows the guys that did it. They were playing around with skateboards. They bumped into three women, older women. The two of them had broken legs, their bones were sticking out of their legs. My friend's elbow got broken, her head got popped open, and those guys had the nerve to say, we're going to kill all the old women that live here. And this man was trying to defend those women when they fell, and he was telling them off, and they told him to shut up, or they were going to come and kill all the older men also. That's not right. My friend knows that they were the homeless. Then, one of the police officers stopped in his car there where the accident, well, it wasn't an accident, it was on purpose, but he stopped, and he looked, and he drove off. He didn't get out of his car to bother to give aid to those women. That's a bunch of baloney. I'm sorry, but something needs to be done about those people. They are out there in the field by choice. They don't want to be in homes where they have to follow rules, where they have to obey the law, and you guys are giving them the right to do that. There, I don't know if you guys have heard of Heart? It's a program in Fresno with police officers also that go out, look for the homeless, and get rid of them. They move them or send them away. There's a program in, in Sacramento also called the Homeless Squad. They go around getting rid of the homeless because they know that they're a menace. We, in the Mobile Home Park, we follow the rules. We pay our taxes, but yet, no help is coming to us. If the homeless fart wrong, you guys run to help them. We, some of the people in, in the Mobile Home Park need help desperately also, but I don't see anybody from the city going and saying, do you need help? My plumbing is going to hell, but I can't afford to fix it. I don't see anybody telling me, let us try to help you. I know a lot of the older seniors that are having problems. Nobody goes to help us. So, why should you guys run out and feed them, give them water, give them the tents? That's not fair. You guys need to open your eyes and realize, you're torturing us. A lot of us are getting sick because of all the smoke, there's always fires. The police do nothing. They don't give them tickets. If we started fires, they'd come after us quick.
30 seconds.
I'm just fed up with you guys not doing damn thing. Something needs to be done about those people before something horrible happens.
Hello, my name is Chandra Lewis. I'm a resident of the Rancho Los Manos Mobile Home Park here in Los Manos. Good evening, councilmen and women. I've been here several times for the last few months. I've told you about my fear of the tenants that are home in the vacant lot behind us that is owned by the city. I have told you about my health problems when they cause fires and how it aggravates my health issues. We have all told you about the filth, the stench, the used needles, the stealing, the, the marring of our property, and, and the destruction of our property. We have told you about the fires and the smoke from unsafe materials. We have told you about the trespassing. We, when will it be heard? And when will the city do something? Merced County arrested a man this year for destruction of property. They're in Merced County. They are Merced. We own Merced County, and they destroyed Bear Creek. He dug into the side of Bear Creek and caused much damage, but the people across the street, which have probably much, the homes probably are worth more than what I live in, and maybe that's why they're hurt, because they have more money. But a man was arrested after digging into Bear Creek embankment, causing thousands of dollars' worth of damages, according to the Merced Police Department. According to the police officer's response to the complaints of a man digging in the creek embankment, police say they were able to match this gentleman to the description of the suspect. After contacting the gentleman, he admitted to causing the damage and was booked in for felony vandalism, according to the police. Officials say that the estimated damage to the embankment was costful thousands of dollars to repair, and there is a very extensive article on it, and that was in, I believe, May. So, why can't you arrest these people, but you put them in a space where you can't see them? And then, you leave it up to the people around them that are paying taxes to identify them. You put us in the line of fire to identify them. Am I a police officer? Am I trained as a police officer? No, I am not. I'm a 64-year-old woman, about to be 65 next week. I am not a trained police officer, but I have been told I have to identify them, and it is very difficult to see from where I'm at when there's fires and when they're exploding the, the tanks like they did the other night. And did I call? No, I did not, because it is worthless to call. So, I want to know why we cannot arrest them for destroying property. They've destroyed, how many times, Chief Prezy, have these destroyed our fence? Several times. Okay, several times is twice. So, we have been defaced, and why can't they be arrested? Because you have no control over them, because you have put in no system to take care of them. I think that you should go back and look at what Merced County has done and arrest them and do something that you can find them and hold them accountable. I am not against the homeless. I'm against thieves. I'm against people that harm other people. That is what I'm against, not the homeless. I'm against destruction and mayhem. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Anna McCauley, resident of Los Banos. I've got three short items. I was going to say regarding the homeless, I I hope that the people in the trailer park will hang around because it's the next agenda item on tonight's meeting. And so what is being proposed and so on, I think it would be worthwhile to at least be here. So many times, this issue gets discussed at the very end of the meeting, and of course, you don't hear what the council's saying. And it's not an easy situation, but I think we do need to resolve it. At the last meeting, there's gonna, I heard, the landscaping contract was going to be amended to add more time for the current contractor to work, and then there would be a new RFP issued? Well, as I understand it, it was just going to go out with the basics that were in the previous contract with an oversight added to it. Having worked on RFPs for years, you know, how do you expect a next contract to be all that much better if your basics are insufficient in requirements, where you know that they need to be improved? So if you go out with another RFP that still has some insufficient areas in what you would like, what you should have, not what you like, but what you should have in the contract, just adding oversight isn't going to take care of that. I think you need to improve the insufficient areas in that basic contract as well as the oversight if you're going to really have a meaningful RFP going forward. Enough on that. Also, on the different water districts in the area, I really do, and people have talked about this, our interim city manager has spoken about it. I think all the water districts that are in our area really need to collaborate to improve our political stance, our political power, at whatever level we have to meet, whether it's county, state, whether it involves federalist some places. But I think that working, all these water districts working together, we can actually have a lot more power going forward because water is just a finite quantity. And you know, many times, it's about water management, not about how much water are we getting from the sky? Because we don't know that. But I think the managing of the water that we do have and, you know, and whatever we can do to get more water to coming to Central Valley, it's ridiculous to see it all going out to the Pacific Ocean when the delta smelt doesn't matter a whit, one way or the other. We shouldn't be concerned about that. And there's more than enough water that goes out that way to protect salmon. So I think we just need to, as a collaborative effort, get a lot more water going into the Central Valley and also increase in improving our management efforts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Domingo Sandoval. I want to introduce you my Christmas, Los Banos Christmas toy drive. It's one of the events I do every single year for past three years. Actually, I want to show you guys that my first, actually, my first picture, I have the support for the whole community, the police department, and actually, a lot of people in the community. Well, I'm here to ask you for help. Right now, I have, right now, I have three hundred and fifty-five families to sign in. Actually, three hundred and fifty-five families sent me an email to need a help. And it's, you know, it have a lot of reasons why. And, you know, it's very believable because it's passing to me. It's the same I pass every single day, and the same thing with you guys. So it's suspense, everything is, you can't buy food, you can't buy anything. So what I asking you guys, let's go help these families. You guys have the resources. You guys can, you know, and now I put a GoFundMe account to can help me to actually raise the money for the kids in fourteen and seventeen. Because I can't afford to buy sweaters, makeup, you know, and things the kids need. I have toys, but I need to help these kids because a seventeen-year-old is still a kid. It's not an adult. It's still a kid. So I asking you guys to help me out. Hey, let's go make Los Banos better. Let's go help these families. Take care of our home first before take somewhere else. I have a lot of people for Los Palos call me. I have a for Augustine call me. The only thing I told them is, "I can't help you because I need to take my home first. I need to help all the kids in my community." You know, in downtown area, it's actually five families with seven kids. They actually share bedrooms and everything. That's my priority, these kids, to help them out. And I ask you, you guys, to help me out. I know why they putting nobody in. And as, I want you guys help me out. I want to do in the plaza. I want to give you the toys in the plaza with Santa Claus in there. See, you guys able to help me out till I can get it, you know, two hours, two hours of plaza. I can, you know, put in my toys. It's not gotta be nothing else. The only, the families come in, get her toys, take a picture with Santa Claus, and walk away. It's not gotta be an event. So just come in and get that. See, you guys able to help me out, I very appreciate it. It's been very very hard to try to get everything together. But you know what? I do it with my heart, so I can do anything I want. I can do everything. So, see you guys able to help me out, I very appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
Hi, my name is Khalid Sanchez. I'm a local resident, also a business owner of Vili's Boutique and Makeup here in San Luis Plaza. I'm here today as an executive member of the Chamber of Commerce, representing. I would like to remind everyone and invite whoever doesn't know about it to the Christmas parade in December third. It's a community event where we're hoping that it helps the community get together. It's gonna be at six P M. It's Saturday, so we're hoping that, now that's gonna be Saturday, a lot of more people that used to say they couldn't go, will go. We're, right now, we have open applications. We still have open applications for vendors. We have open applications for floats. And as well, we have, we're still taking sponsors if anyone's interested.
So I, I'll try to put the community together. So this one has got to show the love for our community. So you can actually, all the commuters, it's got to have a time for coming with the family and have a little good time. I was just planning everything to make it more, more than a hundred floats is our goal. And have it more, your family can come in and sit down and have a, and enjoy the Christmas. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good evening, once again, council members. I'm Cheryl Sarros. I'm also a resident in Los Banos. I'm also formerly homeless. And again, the only reason why I got up to speak is because of that term, "those people." They're human beings like everybody else. I resent the fact that Ms. Nunes wants to get rid of the homeless because not all of them are out there by choice. Yeah, and I can answer both the ladies' questions. You want to know, are they out there by choice? No. The city does help them. I go out there once a week, if not twice a week, with somebody from code enforcement or another agency of higher up in Los Banos, and we go out there and check on the homeless. We make sure there's no needles, and there haven't been needles been found anywhere in the past month. If there are, they're contained in a container, which I personally pick up and I pass off to Sergeant Mendez from code enforcement, and he brings it to the hospital so they can be disposed of properly. Yes, there was a stench. There was an accident with one of the porta potties. The people refused to come out and take it and clean it, and the homeless got a little bit upset. And honestly, I would be too. You know, people don't understand. They are people. They bleed like we do. They breathe like we do. There's a lot of people out there that had jobs. You know, the economy crashed. They lost their jobs. They lost their homes. They lost their families. Some of these people lost everything they had, and they're trying so hard to rebuild it, but with no place to go. What are they supposed to do? They get more and more depressed. They get more and more angry. At this point, I feel like I should go back and live in a tent, because when I was homeless, nobody knew it. Some of them carry themselves a certain way, some don't. Yes, there are some homeless out there that think that the world owes them everything. And honestly, no, it doesn't. In this world, you work for what you get, and you get the same return. There is a gentleman coming to town soon that hopefully he has a solution to this problem. But until then, I'm on board with police department, code enforcement, private department, whoever needs me, through my church or privately, to do whatever I can to help the situation with the homeless. Now, I had met Ms. Lewis, I believe, two years ago at a Christian Ladies Conference in Pismo Beach. And I gave her my number and told her if she had any problems whatsoever, day, night, weekend, call me. But she hasn't taken that, taken advantage of that. The only final question I have is, aren't we Christians? Okay, and to be Christian is to be like Christ, and Christ is love. If you don't have any love for your fellow human being, then what is your purpose?
Take them to live in front of your house.
They do. They do.
Hello, I addressed the council.
Thank you.
Okay, is that?
My name is Blanche, and I'm representing the Elks Lodge tonight. I wanted to just give a report about our Halloween, Halloween costume contest that we had for pets. The purpose was not only to bring joy, but then additionally to raise kibbles and things for our animal shelter, which actually we did. We actually raised one thousand four hundred and sixty pounds of kibble. And so we just wanted to go ahead and give you that report. We have applied for grant for more kibbles, and we're gonna, we've got that. So we just wanted to let you guys know. Thank you.
Thank you. And if that's everyone in the audience, I'll turn to the city clerk, see if anybody's... Okay.
The first comment I received after the council meeting, it was in my junk mail, but I'm gonna read it into the record today. Hi, Ms. Maloney, please read the following email at the public statements portion of the council meeting on November second, two thousand twenty-two. Dear citizens of Las Vanas, my husband and I moved to Las Vanas exactly five years ago this month. So I put ourselves in the category of one of the three groups of people residing here in our beautiful historical town. The three groups are, in my opinion, people who have lived here their entire lives, people who have lived here for the last fifteen to twenty years, and newcomers like us who have lived here five years or less. I would venture to say that each group has a different history, experience, and reason to love our town. However, we all have the same desire to see our town develop and grow in a responsible manner. Growth is more than likely inevitable since Las Vanas, in my opinion, the last frontier of affordable housing available to the Silicon Valley workforce. It happened in Mission Viejo, California, fifty years ago, and Lake Elsinore, Temecula, California, thirty years ago. And trust me, it will happen here too in time. Here is what I love about Las Vanas. It is a beautiful oasis from the bigger city lifestyle. The people are warm and friendly, and the pace is calming to the soul. Ask anyone who does the commute. You can feel the energy shift once you get through the canyon and arrive home. The town has such interesting history and diversity, too. Here is what needs to be done about Las Vanas. Quality healthcare is not available. We need Kaiser. Homelessness is a major problem affecting the entire town. The animal shelter does not serve the animals or the community, is inadequately staffed, and is a kill shelter and hardly ever open. Lack of any kind of entertainment for our young and old. City government is not functioning cohesively to the detriment of our town. No big-name companies have been recruited to settle here, Kaiser, Costco, Amazon, FedEx, or UPS, even though we are located right off the five freeway. Poor water quality, inadequately staffed police department, et cetera. Our population has increased from twenty-ten census of thirty-four thousand five hundred to the twenty-twenty census of forty-five thousand five hundred. This is an increase of thirty-two percent as of twenty-twenty, so even more now. Yet our infrastructure and amenities have not kept up. On October fifth, my husband attended the city council meeting. He was already in the area attending his monthly police volunteer organization vital meeting when his fellow volunteer friend invited him to city hall to witness what was going on. He came home that night to report what he had learned regarding the turmoil that has been brewing in this city for quite some time now. After we talked, it was obvious to us that he felt the need to step up and offer help in some way. That is why he decided to register to run for mayor, even if the only option at the point was to run as a writing candidate. So yes, his name is not printed on the ballot and not enough time to do any kind of campaigning, much less fundraising to support his candidacy. This is simply just a grassroots effort to offer the citizens of Las Vanas an alternative. Before Jim Davis entered the race, there was only one highly funded by big, big, big business candidate on the ballot, and that was it. To learn more about his candidacy, please follow him on Facebook or Nextdoor Neighbor app or join him on his YouTube Live chats in the coming days. The Las Vanas Enterprise issued dated October twenty-eighth on page two will also give you more information. My husband is Jim Davis, and I am asking you to check him out and then vote for him as your write-in candidate for mayor on the ballot. And remember to fill a little circle next to where you write his name. Why Jim Davis is the best candidate? He is an outsider with no historical, emotional, or financial ties to any of the big powers here, which make him impartial. He has no allegiance to anyone or any business here. He is an entrepreneur, possessing all the high-energy skills at a company building a business. He is a problem solver, the kind you want covering your back in a dilemma. He is a uniter and a master negotiator, which seems to be lacking in the functioning of the city government right now. He is a great humanitarian, fighting for equality for all living creatures, both people and animals. He is a great leader with skill set to fix the current chaotic, dysfunctioning city government. He is a visionary and sees great new horizons for Las Vanas under the right cohesive functioning leadership. We want to see Las Vanas retain its small-town atmosphere while also having some big-town amenities. The best of both, basically. Also, we would like to thank all the animal rescue groups who try their very best to help. Please spread the word to vote for the writing candidate, Jim Davis, for mayor if you want to see a positive change and end the ongoing turmoil in our city government. Thank you and God bless Las Vanas. Charlotte Davis. The next email, hello, Ms. Maloney, could you please read this during the council meeting this evening? Thanks so much. Dear council members, it's Casey Miller here. I am writing you once again to beg you to remove the homeless encampment behind Rancho Las Vanas Mobile Home Park. I personally inspected the property last weekend and was absolutely disgusted with how filthy the encampment has become. I could literally smell it from far away. It smells like a landfill. Since the city of Las Vanas placed the homeless there, I thought you were supposed to at least maintain it. Well, that's not being done because there is garbage everywhere. I am expecting the property again this weekend. I sure hope to see some improvement. I just read an article the other day about Raisin City. Here the county of Fresno received some, received several community complaints about a homeless encampment there. The taxpaying community members expressed their concern about the messy and unsafe living conditions of the encampment, and those complaints were over only a year's time, one year, only one year, and the county took action to make the neighborhood safe again. We have been begging the city of Las Vanas for three years. Here we are, three years later, and it's gone from bad to worse. When are you going to stand by your taxpaying Las Vanas citizens and help us? The county of Fresno gave notices to the homeless in stating they were going to clear out the camp. Then a final notice was given. Have you given the Las Vanas encampment any notices? If not, then why not? The county of Fresno worked with advocate groups to help them relocate the homeless and find housing options for them. Have you done this? If not, then why not? And if you have been working with advocacy groups, please give us the courtesy of telling us when the relocation will happen. At a previous council meeting, I listened to an audience member falsely claim that they are exaggerating the problems. Really? Do you live in our park? Of course not. So therefore, you have absolutely no clue what our tenants have had to endure. To the advocate groups in the audience, can you please take some of these homeless folks and house them at your house? If you are that passionate about helping them, then give them your home and stop expecting us to deal with it. To the churches, please open up your parking lots to them to house- To the churches, please open up your parking lots to them, to house them. We are tired of hearing the council says these things take time. You've had three years. That's plenty of time, so please get on it. Give the encampment the notices and clear it out. Stop with all the dang excuses and get it done. If the county of Fresno can take care of it in a year, then certainly the city of Los Banas could have done it within the last three. I understand that some of you are working on long-term solution, and that's great. However, we need immediate solutions right now. It's absolutely mind-blowing to me that after three years, we are still begging the city council to take action and help us. You have failed the citizens of Los Banas. Thank you, um, Casey Miller, Park Operator, Rancho Los Banas Mobile Home Park. And then I have a email from John Chufo. Dear Ms. Bowersocks, or to whom this may pertain, I am writing to convey my concerns and to also obtain some information. A month ago, I came home from work to my bushes on the side of my home located at two oh two North Santa Clara Street to be cut down significantly, and it was a bot- and it was a mess. Due to the bushes, we're unable to come back from the botched lawn care the city performed. I was not notified via email or mail that the bus- bushes needed to, needed care according to an ordinance that I may or may not have been in violation of. If I have been prof- properly notified, I would have taken care of this issue, and I would still have the bushes I planted and maintained for years. Now the branches that were poorly cut are protruding outward that could cause a resident that is walking to trip and get hurt. I guarantee then I would be liable because it's adjacent to my property, not the city, even though the mess was caused by the city workers. Now I have to go out there and fix this mess to prevent any po- potential injury, and I have lost my beautiful bushes. This sort of abrupt city work has affected me in the past as well. Two years ago, my other property, which is located at eight-four-three Vermont Avenue, had a larger problem I had to deal with. The city was repairing the sidewalk while three of my four sprinklers were removed. The sprinklers were impulse rampers sprinklers, which are pretty pricey. A tree was removed and the lawn was destroyed close to the sidewalk. The sprinklers were not replaced, and the dirt clumps were left behind, and all this mess was left for me to have to clean up. I sincerely feel that this is highly unorthodox and respectful to homework, and disrespectful to homeowners. So I have several questions for you. Is the city exempt from notifying residents of work that we done, that would be done in a homeowner's property, or, or, or work that could potentially ruin their property? I am curious to know if the city public works employees that cause damages to foliage, lawns, sprinklers, et cetera, are the workers not responsible to replace the items removed, or do they not have to utilize caution and concern when working near a home? I would also like to know if they also do not have to clean up their mess, because I had to clean up my messes and pay to replace the damages caused to my property in Vermont Avenue. Hypothetical question, if I were to leave town for some time and return and find a mess left behind by the public works department, could I potentially receive a fine from code enforcement for the mess? There's a lot of concerns pertaining to this. There has to be some kind of system in place where decency and common courtesy are extended to the homeowners. It wasn't until this recent issue that I finally decided to reach out because I'm truthfully feeling upset. I wanted to be concise in relaying the importance pertaining to the bushes. I utilize these bushes not only for the aesthetic appeal to my home, but to decorate for Halloween and Christmas. Every year, I hold a light show at my home that residents can enjoy. The residents would tune into a radio station to watch a light show that is synced to music. Now that my bushes are gone, that section can no longer be utilized. I really do appreciate you reading my email. I understand this may have been time-consuming because of its length. I am hoping to hear back from you. I hope you can offer guidance, information, answer my questions, or provide any feedback you may have so that may we resolve this from happening in the future. Sincerely, John Chufo. And those are the only comments that I received.
Thank you, Ms. Melanie. Okay. So if there's no more emails, we'll close the public forum, and we'll move on to the next item. Consideration of approval of a consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be voted on in one motion unless removed from the consent agenda by a city council member. And we'll turn to Ms. Melanie.
Items on the consent agenda are as follows. Number two-three-five-seven-four-two through two-three-five-nine-three-four in the amount of one million three hundred and thirty-seven thousand one hundred and eight dollars and twenty-five cents. First quarter investment report for the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three fiscal year. City Council Resolution Number six-five-seven-eight. Reauthorizing remote teleconference meetings of the legislative bodies of the city of Los Banas pursuant to the provisions of AB three-sixty-one. City Council Resolution Number six-five-seven-nine. Approving closure of non-essential city offices on Friday, December twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two, and Friday, December thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two. City Council Resolution Number six-five-eight-zero. Authorizing the interim city manager to enter into the eleventh amendment to landscape maintenance contract between the city of Los Banas and Ronnie's, Inc., through March thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. City Council Resolution Number six-five-eight-one. Approving a side-letter agreement memorandum of understanding by and between the city of Los Banas and the public work, and the Public Employees Union Local One ASME Public Works Unit regarding mid-contract salary increases and essential worker payments. City Council Resolution Number six-five-eight-two. Approving a side-letter memorandum of understanding by and between the city of Los Banas and the Los Banas Police Dispatchers Community Services Officers Association regarding mid-contract salary increases and essential worker payments. City Council Resolution Number six-five-eight-three. Approving a side-letter agreement memorandum of understanding by and between the city of Los Banas and the Los Banas Firefighters Association regarding mid-contract salary increases and essential worker payments. City Council Resolution Number six-five-eight-four. Approving a side-letter agreement memorandum of understanding by and between the city of Los Banas and the Los Banas Police Officers Association regarding mid-contract salary increases and essential worker payments. Approving a city council resolution number six-five-eight-five. Approving a side-letter agreement memorandum of understanding by and between the city of Los Banas and the Los Banas Police Sergeants Association regarding mid-contract salary increases and essential worker payments. City Council Resolution Number six-five-eight-six. Amending and approving Division Four salary schedule employee classifications relating to citywide salary increases and authorizing essential worker payments. And those items are to be approved as submitted.
Thank you, Ms. Melanie. I will now ask the council if there's any items they would like to pull for discussion in separate vote.
Thank you. Yes, I'd like to pull item E, uh, for discussion in a separate vote, please.
Thank you. You want to go ahead and make a motion for the remaining?
Sure, absolutely. Uh, yes, with that being said, I'd like to make a motion to approve consent agenda, uh, on the agen- the consent agenda for tonight's meeting with the, um, minus item seven E.
Thank you. Do I have a moat? Mr. Jones?
I'll second that.
I'll do that. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, now we'll move to item E. Ms. Lewis?
Thank you. Um, I, I know we're moving this contract forward because of the requests that staff had to counsel last week about, um, looking at, uh, what was be- what was proposed to us, uh, as far as a contract, um, and, and basically the Cadillac version. I know that's not specific to this particular item, but I, I feel like I'd want to interject in here if I can, um, and if not, I'll bring it up at, at my counsel, uh, time. But after, you know, sometimes we get things so quickly, it's hard to think through it in a matter of a short period of time, especially when things are changed on the dais. But what I, I would like to see, since this contract is going to be extended to March thirtieth, is that, you know, if, if we're going to look at a low-end version, I'd like to have staff bring us a mid, mid version and a Cadillac version. And I'd like to see what all those things are going to be offering the citizens of Los Banas. Not just what it's going to cost us, but what it's going to offer us. Um, it, it's hard, really, to make a legitimate decision up here on the desi- on the dais when we only have a portion of the information, so, um, since this contract is going to be extended, um, I, I would certainly like to see, you know, at least three levels of where we are financially, what we can afford, and what those contracts are going to give the citizens here in Los Banas. And so that's kind of where I am. But again, I'll bring it up, you know, at my time to speak, uh, but this, to me, this is all kind of related, and, um, you know, I, I don't have an issue with, you know, extending this contract through March, but I think we need to have enough information up here on the dais to make a legitimate decision as to how we want to move forward with, with our landscaping contract, whether it's, you know, Ronnie's, um, company or any other company that's applying.
You go ahead and make a quick response.
Good evening, Mayor Council. Thank you for pointing that. So what we discussed last week, um, uh, last meeting was a full-service contract, including a level of service increase to bring up, uh, um, additional services to help our parks, um, to look nicer. Um, that, the, the, the main issues with the, um, the full-service contract and improving those is that a lot of our parks still have, um, facilities that need to be upgraded through a capital project, such as irrigation upgrade, replanting, converting drought resistant, that is not included as part of the maintenance contract. So even if we are to approve the contract, um, last two weeks ago, um, as is, there is no guarantee that that was going to bring that service up, just because there is a, a huge, um, unknown to the level of, of current infrastructures. Now, the motion from last meeting was for staff to go back out to the basics, uh, maintenance service level, um, but to include the oversight. Um, so now we can go back and prepare that RFP. However, in order for us to bring back, uh, to the mid-level, we need to kind of define that, what is considered a mid-level contract? And just the, a little bit of cautionary is that, once we put a contract in, you start adding a lot of bid alternative and stuff like that, it can impact the cost that we'll be getting, uh, from these services. Uh, certainly, we can build in those bid alternative, um, to evaluate level of different alternative in the contract, but some, a lot of time when we adding those bid alternative, the price come in can be significantly higher than what it truly is at, at time. Um, at this point, it is a little bit of unknown. I mean, we projected that at minimums, our current contract, even though we stay at basics, that the price might go up somewhere between twenty to thirty percent just for the, um, the, uh, cost of living increase, uh, uh, period, so. Um, but again, um, it's dependent on what council would like to proceed, um, and staff will, will, uh, entertain that.
And, and I appreciate the statement, so I will bring it up at the end for my time of speaking, but as, as it always happens, um, we have to make the decision up here of what's going to happen in the city. And to have an expectation of staff giving us alternatives rather than just one is what I would like to see us begin to do. And, you know, it's up to the financial department to tell us where the cost overruns are, and all of that should be in the package. But again, I will, I will make a, another statement, uh, at the end and, and request that at least, um, not that it be brought back to council, but that perhaps our city manager can direct staff to al- alter, um, or the request that was made last week so that we have a better understanding of what is coming to us. Let us make the decision up here. You give us the information and let us make the decision.
So part of that, that extension was to give us enough time to make these assessments so that we could bring, you know, real numbers to you. I think at, at the point that the RFP became a little uncomfortable for us was that it was very nebulous and, and we just did not know what was going to happen in the first six months of that contract. So that's the reason why we, we thought it was important to extend this to that point so that we could then bring a, an actual RFP that makes sense in terms of whether we're going to do alternate bidding on infrastructure or what, because there, there is a lot of old infrastructure in, in the landscaping of.
And, and I, I think we understand that. So again, I'll, I'll, I'll just make the request during my counsel time, um, but, you know, I, I just kind of saw some, um, relationship to this since we're extending the contract another four months, well, five months, actually, that, that, that should be enough time for us to have, uh, a really legitimate information coming to council so that we can make a good decision. So that, that's it, and I, I'll make, unless some other council member has a statement about this, I'll, I'll make a motion.
We can go ahead with the.
Okay, thank you. Um, so I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number six-five-zero-eight as submitted on the consent agenda.
Mr. Jones?
I'll second out there for Tim.
I got a motion from Councilmember Lewis and a second from Councilmember Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed? Passed. All right, now we'll move on to our next item, item eight. Consideration of authorizing two new housing homeless positions in the Community and Economic Development Department. And before we run to Mr. Kuhn, uh, the city manager wants to put out a couple of sentences.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mer- uh, Pro-Tam and members of the council. Uh, we would like to, to indicate that, um, in light of the many, uh, meetings that you've had on this and, and the, uh, need to have a, what I've in the past called a relentless continuing, uh, effort, uh, to work, uh, amongst and between jurisdictions and the homeless population, uh, what we're trying to do here is to recognize there, there may be, uh, a better way than to continually involve the sworn personnel. Uh, they're great people, don't get me wrong. Uh, they will be available at a moment's notice. Uh, our, our feeling is that we've got to get started on trying some new things and to have some integration in terms of our overall housing, uh, efforts plus, uh, a specific assignment for a full-time, non-sworn position is where we'd like to start. And I've questioned, uh, this as well as the other items on the agenda. Financially, how sustainable is this? Um, I'm looking at five to seven years, and, um, I'm sure Mr. Kuhn is, is prepared with, uh, uh, a more lengthy sustainability factor. In other words, if we're going to go out on, uh, this limb and we're going to approve this stuff, how long can we keep this and the other items on this agenda in place without damaging the county, the, excuse me, the city's, uh, financial structure?
I would say in perpetuity, because we kind of have to go back to tw- uh, twenty-twelve, um, when the state decided to, in its great wisdom, dissolve redevelopment agencies. And part of redevelopment agencies, uh, twenty percent of that was set aside for loan from housing. And that was really the true vessel for cities to combat homelessness, because really what happens is, is there's a lot of at-risk people that are, are teetering on the edge i- in, in, a lot of those programs were transitional housing. So they would find y- places for people to stay until they were able to, you know, get themselves permanent housing. Now, the RDA, um, helped finance the ward project, and since then, the, the city really hasn't had the financial mechanisms to, um, to really address housing. So I looked at what the city was getting back, uh, from the county, uh, based upon So I looked at what the city was getting back from the county based upon the Redevelopment Dissolution Act, and I thought we could reprogram that specifically to housing and homelessness, because that was the main initiative, that we were looking to both develop a department to combat this, as well as find a permanent funding source. So the funding source for tax increment, it increases similar to property taxes in the general fund, so there's always an escalator of 2%. We get about $375,000 back from, after the county takes a piece, the school districts, and, you know, everything relating to the dissolution act. So we decided to reprogram that into this department, and we went back and forth to see whether or not this needed to be a policing thing, or if it was going to have a multi-use function. So talking to community development, we realized that we needed one person that could manage grants and write grants and relate grant speak to the state and the federal government and the county. And then we needed someone that could coordinate the homeless issues and work with the police and fire and code enforcement. So we decided that it made the most sense to combine these two and kind of start a housing department, so to speak. It's not its own department, it's under Community and Economic Development. But what will this allow is that the grant writer will be able to start finding new funding sources, of which their positions will probably be funded by these through the administrative charges through these grants. So all of a sudden, this structural budget becomes even more down the road. So it may blossom into the ability to hire more people, or to reprogram that to direct grants to people. So the whole point is to really combat this at two levels, to say, we really need to get the housing programs back on track, have someone that can spearhead that, and we need the homelessness situation, which is prevalent everywhere in the state, there needs to be someone that can go out there and really figure out how to tackle that from their vantage point. So with the police and community development, we came up with this and devised this plan that we're presenting to you. And in the discussion, it talks about the wide ranges of programs and other things that the housing will do, and that they'll really have oversight over the homeless coordinator. So that person will really just be assessing that for the housing manager, so that they can figure out what sources and what kind of housing the city needs in order to really give a permanent solution to the homelessness here. So I'm positive that the budgetary program that's available will in fact make these positions permanent. So if there's any questions or concerns, I'm happy to address those now.
Thank you. Well, I'm glad you brought it up, and now it's on record that part of their job would be grant writing, because I didn't see that in a report. And that's really important component to the homeless problem that we have, is being able to access funds, which is very difficult. And, you know, as some of you may know, I, well, I received an email from this organization called Cal Matters, and the governor has just recently decided that he's not going to distribute these billions of dollars of money that are out there for homeless projects, because cities aren't quote-unquote "doing enough." And so it's the first time that I've seen San Francisco, Oakland, and San Jose mayors come out against what he's attempting to do because of the large homeless populations in those areas. So after reading that article, you know, I kind of thought, well, you know, where does that leave small cities like us? You know, it's just like we don't exist. If the major metropolitans who normally get these monies for homelessness aren't getting it now, and all these billions of dollars are being held back, where does that leave us as a city of Lost Bannas with, you know, less than 50,000 people as residents? So I'm hoping that, you know, the grant writing will help us. And I, you know, I don't want to see these as buzzwords, you know, things like advocacy, because there's a difference in advocacy and outreach versus actual services. And the world we live in now, here in California, you know, services may or may not be there, but even with outreach, people are offered something, homeless people are offered something, but they don't have to take it. And therein lies the difference from the old days when I was in mental health versus today. Everything is, you know, if you want the service, you know, some of it is here for you, but if you don't, we get to leave you where you are. And I think that's really a disservice to people who are mentally ill and really need help to reconstitute their life. There are those who have lost their jobs, as you said, and there are those who are truly sick and can't make that decision. And that's where our government in California has failed people who are mentally ill. And there's still a good percentage of those people that are living unhoused, out in the open, lighting fires, what have you. And at this point, all we can do is offer them something, and they don't have to take it. So therein lies the dilemma for our residents who are suffering some of the things that are happening to them by virtue of the mental illness of the person who's causing, or the people who are causing, the problem. So, you know, I'm really hopeful and very interested to see just how much we can move this problem and make it happen. And one of the things I saw in here was access to family reunification. And that's really important to me, because there are many people out there who have been disconnected from their families, or who have left the state, or left wherever they lived. And there are some families who don't want them back, but there are some families who do want their loved ones back. And we need to make sure that that connection happens to get them back with their families, so that they can help them reconstitute and become, you know, more productive in society. So, you know, I think it's, I'm hopeful. I'm hopeful that, you know, this is going to work for our city. And I know that this is not something that should have been laid in the laps of our police department, you know, that's just not the job that they were called to do. And unfortunately, we probably should have done this some time ago, but at least we're doing it now. And that's why I remain hopeful that something positive is going to come out of bringing forth this physician, this coordinator's position, and helping us with our homeless problem. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Mr. Lomas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. Thank you, staff. Thank you, staff, very much for doing this homework, putting this proposal forward. I think this is going to be very positive. I know that it will work. It's something that is a long time coming. It's just the reality of today's world. You know, this is going to be self-funded because of grants and the partnerships that are going to be created, which are essential, i.e., especially with the county, the Human Services Agency, Mr. John Checkley, the Deputy Director for Homelessness. I think that's going to be a critical resource. We can partner with them, we can network with them, we can see what they're doing over in Merced, and not reinvent the wheel, but perfect it. Again, and this is going to provide the ability for our police department to focus on what they're supposed to do, is policing our city. But at the same time, we have that liaison, that second position, to network with the individuals, to network with the state, the city, the federal governments, to, again, to leverage to maximum, to provide relief to segments of our society that have been asking for relief. So again, this is a major, major building block in providing that relief. Again, I know it will work, because this is the reality, and this is what, again, I thank you for the work you've done in presenting this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mr. Lomas. Anyone else? Everything's all good, Mr. Kuhn?
Well, this is, you know, going to be an evolving process, of course, and, you know, the issue that I think everybody is having is that our healthcare system is kind of overtaxed, to begin with, and emergency services kind of take a leading role over things like mental health, unless that person needs emergency services. So again, with at least this start and building this as some permanence, I think that those outreach programs should be able to reach everybody along the spectrum of that's dealing with housing problems and homelessness, at least in my opinion.
I appreciate it.
So at this time, the City Council Resolution Number 6587, Amending Division Four Salary Schedule Employee Classifications Relating to Changes to Section C, Community and Economic Development Department and Budget Amendment. And I will entertain a motion. Councilmember Lewis?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to move forward with Resolution Number 6587. Oh, am I on the right one? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Okay, 6587, as read by title.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Councilmember Lomas?
Sure, I'll take it there.
All right, I have a motion from Councilmember Lewis and a second from Councilmember Lomas. Are all in favor?
Aye.
No opposed? All right, that item is passed. And this is our first step, like we've said in the past, that more manpower is needed, and this is a good step in the right direction. We now will move on to Item Number Nine, Merced County Sixth Cycle Multi-Jurisdictional Housing Element. And we'll turn to Community Economic Development Director, Ms. Elms.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem and City Council. This particular item, well, first off, our housing element is mandated by the state of California, and just appropriate that we're following the previous discussion regarding housing for the homeless. Through our housing element, the city of Lost Bannas, and actually all local jurisdictions, we are mandated to provide housing, and that is housing for all income levels within our community. That is a state requirement. Our housing element is an eight-year cycle. Currently, we're in the fifth cycle. That was from the 2014 to 2023. And with that, we are required by state law to provide annual progress reports. And as you, some of the council may recall, by April 1st of each year, so prior to April 1st, I provide an annual progress report to the council regarding our housing element, and I also have to provide a report on our RENA, our Regional Housing Needs Allocation. And that RENA describes how the city is progressing in our housing needs for all income levels. Currently, the city is in compliance. We have been providing our annual progress reports, and we have followed HCD's requirements. So we are going to be going into the sixth cycle. The cycles are broken down by region. There's the Bay Area, Southern California, Northern California. Based on those various regions, some of them have already begun the sixth cycle. The central, well, the San Joaquin Valley is its own region, and we're the last region of the state to begin the sixth cycle, which will technically start in 2024. It is generally an 18-month process, and we need to start that immediately to be able to meet HCD's requirements. So with this sixth cycle, there are substantial changes and new requirements. This housing element cycle is much more complex than previous cycles, and the state of California has been very clear to local jurisdictions that the carrot and stick approach will no longer work. It will be the stick approach. There will be fines, there will be repercussions for not meeting our housing mandates. So as a part of all of that, many government agencies that have already been in, started the sixth cycle, they have started using a multi-jurisdictional housing element. So that acronym MJHE stands for Multi-Jurisdictional Housing Element, and that is a regional approach. So that's taking it at a county approach. So Merced County, we have begun exploring, we've been exploring what that would entail, how that would benefit the jurisdictions. We've been discussing this at a working group level for quite some time. So that includes all the six cities in the county and the counties, so seven agencies, with Merced County, MCAG, so Merced County Association of Governments, our COG, which are our metropolitan planning organization, as that hub to be able to pull us all together. So the benefits to a multi-jurisdictional housing approach, first off, it's the economy of scale. So we get an increased value per dollar for doing this jointly together. As you can imagine, all of those seven agencies, if we didn't join together, we'd have to do a housing element all by ourselves, because it is state mandated. And 90% of the document of a housing element is state mandated. It's going to be uniform across all the seven agencies. There's really only about 10% of it that's unique to each local jurisdiction. And then it's the limited number of consultants that are available. There's only certain consultants that provide housing element updates, that's their niche. And as the seven agencies and all of the cities and counties within the San Joaquin Valley, we would all be competing for these consulting services. So for us to join together, it just makes sense, because it's a limited number of folks available to even provide that service. Like I said, it's similar work for each agency. HCD has also, we've met with HCD, the California Department of Housing and Community Development, who actually, they brought this to the region, our region's attention, and said, you know, this has been successful in other regions. We suggest, Merced County, that you guys look at this approach. So it is encouraged by HCD. Also, the increased cost and complexity can be shared by the group. Like I said, this housing element has a much more complex component to it, much more intense requirements. And then certified housing element is the key to grant funding. So back on October 19th, we brought forward a permanent local housing allocation grant. That grant would only be available to the city if we're in compliance with our housing element. A majority of state funding, state grants are tied to our housing element. And as we see the future of the state of California, we anticipate that much more state dollars will be tied to our housing element. So it is important for us to be in compliance. So the scope of the multi-jurisdictional housing element, first task, and this has been developed through MCAG with all of the seven agencies, would be project management. The task two would be data gathering and assessment. Task three is community engagement. And then four is the housing element preparation. Five would be to develop that draft housing element. Six is environmental compliance. That's important in itself and worth every penny of our contribution to this task. And then task seven is the actual final adoption, which would come to each of the local jurisdictions. So we would have to adopt our multi-jurisdictional housing element, and then there's going to be an appendix just for Lost Bannas. So an alternative to not participating in the multi-jurisdictional housing element would be that we would need to hire our own consultant, and like I said, it's very limited in the amount of folks that would be able to provide the service to us, and we'd be competing with all of the other agencies within the San Joaquin Valley. The estimated cost to prepare our own housing element, and I just got rough estimates, is about $200,000. And that's most likely not even including the environmental document that needs to be included. And that's most likely not even including the environmental document that needs to be included. It does not include necessary staff time either, uh, to manage and coordinate the project, and which would include significant outreach and engagement. Um, so a benefit to us pulling together and doing this as a region with MCAG is that MCAG will be managing and coordinating the contract. There will be oversight from all of the jurisdictions, um, but it will not be project managed, and it's intense staff time as it would be if we did it all by ourselves. So, the fiscal impact, um, for each jurisdiction will be responsible. So, each, each of the six cities in the county are responsible for our own portion of our fair share of the multi-jurisdictional housing element. A consultant contract would be through MCAG. Like I said, this is about over a million dollars, um, to be able to do a regional multi-jurisdictional housing element. Uh, approximately $480,000 is going to be covered by REAP, uh, which is the Regional Early Action Planning Grant. Uh, it has to be used for a regional purpose, which our housing element qualifies, our regional housing element qualifies as that. Um, so, that money will be used first towards our multi-jurisdictional housing element. Then, MCAG is requesting $35,000 from each of the jurisdictions for staff time to manage the contract and assist with coordination so that they can run it. And then, MCAG has coordinated with local jurisdictions to develop a draft cost-sharing agreement. And how we broke down the agreement, which it's, um, attached to the staff report in the resolution, is by, uh, the size of city. So, um, it's broken down by big cities, medium cities, and little cities. The city of Los Banas, we got grouped into the medium-sized city. And, um, Los Banas's total contribution would be $88,844. So, that's our total contribution for the entire housing element. Uh, for fiscal year 2223, that's this fiscal year, it's approximately $44,422 uh, that we're requesting with a budget amendment. Um, and then the remainder of the contract would be built into next year's budget. So, next steps, uh, there is a deadline, uh, to receive direction from each jurisdiction's governing board by December 1st. So, MCAG has asked that all of the local jurisdictions provide a resolution by our governing boards by December 1st, so they know if they can move forward. And then, uh, there is that monetary deposit to participate, and that's due by December 30th. Um, and that is 20%, that's broken down, um, and that's just our initial start, um, which is about $17,769. That's Exhibit A, uh, breaks down what that deposit would be, which this budget amendment would cover that. So, with that, staff is requesting that the City Council consider adopting Resolution Number 6588 to participate in the Merced County Multi-Jurisdictional Housing Element and Cost Sharing Agreement, and adopt a revised budget for fiscal year 2223 as it pertains to expenditures. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Elms. I'll now turn to the council to ask for questions. Uh, Mr. Jones?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Um, question with, uh, this multi-juris, or this multi-jurisdiction housing element, um, so some of the benefits is that it does alleviate some of the burden off, say, the city of Los Banas. Let's just say we're not specializing in a certain type of housing. Let's just say low-income housing, and we have another city that is, it shifts some of our burden onto them if they're willing to take it on, or are we still required to have?
Yeah, unfortunately, it does not. So, doing it at a regional level really just helps us put those parts of our document that we would all have to do anyway altogether. But the RENA, the Regional Housing Needs Allocation, uh, does not change our responsibility for our RENA. So, each city is still responsible. Um, which HCD is very clear that Dos Palos's responsibility is not Los Banas's responsibility, and that, that responsibility cannot be shared as a region. Um, but we can work on our housing elements together, essentially, is the guidelines.
Okay, and next question I have is, if we have, say, another severe recession where developers are not developing, and we don't build for five years, how does that impact our housing element? As long as we have land designation, are we in the clear?
It is about land use, providing land use. It's also about, um, seeking assistance and resources from the state of California. So, there's going to be policies within the housing element um, that outline, city of Los Banas, you shall be doing this, and as long as we're meeting that criteria. I will say, what happened in the recession, at least for Los Banas, affected our above-market rate component of our RENA, which we completed that years ago. Um, it's the low-income component, which in a recession, they're all most likely there would be resources and funding available to accommodate that, and that's usually a need during those times. So, I don't see, you know, that necessarily being an issue. If anything, it would be the above market rate that we would probably have an issue, and Los Banas, that's, we're a community that, that, that generally doesn't affect us. That affects Dos Palos, Gustine, the smaller guys that are harder to develop.
So, with our low income, if we had a developer that wanted to do a 200 unit apartment complex and designate, say, 20% to, uh, low income or below-market rate, that would qualify for our uh, low-income element, right?
It sure does. So, it does have to have a certain percentage of the area median income. Um, there are criteria to be able to, to meet that eligibility, but generally, if it's affordable housing and they're setting aside 20%, then we get credit for that, yes.
Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, um, a couple of questions, uh, just for clarification in the fiscal impact, uh, part of your report. Uh, the, uh, one, two, three, four, fifth point there, MCAG is requesting $35,000. Is that, uh, in addition to the 88, 844, is, or does that include that?
That includes. So, in total, out the door, we would be 88, 844. That includes the 35,000.
Okay. And just to confirm, I can just follow up, Mr. Jones's question is, so this is a cost-sharing agreement, not a responsibility-sharing agreement?
Right.
Okay, very well. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Pro Tem.
Thank you. Um, in, in the fiscal impact, uh, portion of the report, it says that this contract is going to cost $1,037,43. Am I correct on that?
Yes.
Okay, and then MCAG is, are they responsible for the approximate $480,000? Is that their portion?
No, that's through REAP. So, yes, it is, technically, it's their portion, but they're getting that money from the state of California, the Department of Housing and Community Development. That's REAP 1.0 funding. One, there's REAP 1 and REAP 2. Um, and it has to be used for regional early action planning, and that's, the housing element does qualify for it.
So, is that subtracted from the $1,030?
Yes. So, if you look at the cost-sharing arrangement on Exhibit A, it's on page 113. It breaks down the REAP 1 contribution. Um, so, the consultant's contract is the first column, and then the second column is the REAP 1 contribution. So, it subtracts out the 480. It divides out then a base cost for all of the cities. That base cost is $38,000. And then, based on the size of the city, there's a pro-rate cost. That was what I had mentioned about small, medium, large.
Now, when you subtract the 480 from the $1,030 and some change there, um, that comes to roughly about 500 and 500, uh, let's see, what do I have, 5,573. Um, and I don't have a calculator, so I, I, I probably should have calculated that out to figure out the remaining left, uh, to sort out how that base cost was formulated. I'm, I'm not quite sure, so. Um, I'll, I'll do that later. But the, for the city of Attwater and Los Banas, I know the populations are slightly different. So, that, are they considered a medium city as well, just as we were?
Um, they were, um, considered a medium city. It was, um, modeled using the Measure V, uh, ratios.
Okay.
Um, so, yes, it is a pro-rate cost. They were not, they are slightly smaller, so you can see that their cost is slightly a little bit less.
So, it's population and deciding, you know, if you're a medium, small, or large city?
So, Dos Palos and Gustine, you can see, are the same amount, um, because they're small. And then it goes on, yeah.
But their populations are different. So, that's kind of why I was wondering how we got classed to have to pay more if we were a medium city and Attwater was a medium city as well.
We're medium A and they're medium B.
Okay. Okay, uh, tho- those are kind of my questions. I just wanted to make sure that it was equitable for our city um, on how this was divided out. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Lomas, you had a question?
Yes, sure, I'm sure. I, one follow-up question. Uh, to staff, regarding this agreement, how does it bind us to it? Is there a way for us to decide later on, hey, this is, this isn't working for us? This is not what we agreed upon. Is there a way, is there any kind of a penalty for us to withdraw from it?
Um, so with this resolution, we are committing to participate. So, yes, we are committing to provide uh, this monetary value to this contract.
Okay.
And the penalty would be, we are committing to doing this, we would be obligated to pay.
No, I, I understand, but we could just pass a resolution withdrawing from this commitment, and there would be no penalty from, uh, MCAG?
No, as long as we, we paid our contribution, there would not be any penalty. But I would highly, I, I can't see a scenario where we would, that would be in the best favor of the city.
These are just, you got to think ahead because, uh, again, so that we know fully what we're committing to. That's all.
Right, right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lomas. The only question I have, uh, have all the rest of the cities, if anybody tends to not go with this, does that change our numbers?
It could potentially, although, um, all of the other cities have gotten some sort of soft commitment already to participate.
All right. Appreciate it. So, if there's no further questions, we'll entertain a motion. Councilmember Jones?
Yes, Mayor Pro Tem, I'd like to make a, uh, City Council Resolution, or I'd like to adopt City Council Resolution Number 6588 as, uh, submitted.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Councilmember Lomas?
Yes, sure, I'll take a minute.
All right, I have a motion from Councilmember Jones, a second from Alamos. All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed? All right, it is passed. Ms., Ms. Elms? And we will now move to our next item, Number 10, Advisement of Public Notices, and there's no report. Now, we'll move to Number 11, City Manager Report. We'll turn to City Manager, Mr. Wellman.
Mr. Pro Tem and members of the council, a giant thank you for your action in recognizing, uh, your employees. While we did not recommend, uh, formally opening an MOU, the side letters will, uh, legally, uh, perform the same function. This is probably in the last several decades, the best, uh, position that I think I've experienced in any jurisdiction, and will allow us to compete favorably in the marketplace for very much-needed uh, public protection officers, including police, fire, uh, public works, and, uh, miscellaneous employees. So, I'm, I'm just very grateful to the coun- council. I think you're going to see some really, um, significant results from this, and I, for one, very much appreciate it. I'm sure everybody else who is associated does as well. Secondly, uh, Mr. Pro Tem, I'm required as an interim city manager to provide the council with 30 days' written notice. As you may be aware, I'm limited, uh, to 960 hours, and I have gotten thus far two reminders from CalPERS. And, uh, I, I am going to absolutely do my best to make it through the calendar year. Um, it has gone so quickly. Um, but I'll, I'll be coordinating with your very able city attorney and our finance chief and our, uh, other, other folks, in, in, including the, uh, uh, city, um, representatives for, for personnel. So, thank, thanks again for the opportunity. Uh, we look to get a lot done in the next 30 days or so. I had my staff meeting yesterday, and what I had planned on, uh, covering in 30 minutes, uh, took two hours. So, uh, your, your departments are working at full speed, with some of them, frankly, uh, I am concerned about, the, the level of workload, the speed, and I have a favorite saying over time, "Let's not get caught speeding." In other words, let's have two sets of eyes on everything. Let's double-check all of our numbers. Uh, let's communicate department to department and test, uh, the narrative that surrounds each recommendation. We may have, we may make a mistake here and there, but it's going to be the exception rather than the rule. Uh, Mr. Pro Tem, that will conclude my remarks for today. I'm, I'm open for questions, by the way.
Thank you, Mr. Wellman. All right, that concludes the City Manager's report. We'll now move to item 12, Report Update on Merced County Association of Governments, MCAG, Peninsula Clean Energy, PCE, and Measure V Committee. At this time, there's nothing to report, and now we'll move on to oh, oh, you do have?
I don't have a report for MCAG tonight, uh, but, you know, I've asked, um, uh, our city manager to add under these reports, uh, the San Joaquin, uh, Air Valley Pollution Control District, that, the board that I sit on. And, um, we had a two-day study session in education and strategic planning, uh, process last week uh, in the mountains up in Fresno. And, uh, quite a bit of things were discussed, just to touch on a few, um, uh, healthy air living for school districts. Um, there was talk, you know, discussion about, uh, funding that's available for school districts to, uh, purchase electric buses. And it's really competitive because as soon as that money comes in, most of the school districts within San Joaquin Valley um, apply for that money and, um, you know, try to get the school buses. We did talk about some of the smaller, uh, communities, um, within San Joaquin Valley who may not have the staff to get as quickly to that money as some of the large cities, to see if there is something that can be done, uh, to help them out, to be able to access those funds, so uh, that it's not just on a first-come, first-served basis, but, uh, reserving some of those funds aside for them to apply for. Uh, they were als, they also showed, uh, pictures where some of the schools have started posting no idling signs, uh, when parents and school buses are dropping off, uh, kids so that it could reduce the pollution in the air, um, around the schools, uh, where, where the children are. Um, we had the EPA there, and of course, you know, I can say in general, uh, for our farmers, the minute that they are, uh, able to access and reach some of the milestones that state of California and the EPA want them to reach, there are always new ones looming forward, and, and so it seems like it's a never-ending thing. Um, a lot of restrictions are coming down on our farmers and, uh, inhibiting how they are able to grow and manage their crops. Um, we talked about drought and, uh, the west side of San Joaquin Valley, which includes the west side of Fresno and Merced County, uh, there'll be more water restrictions coming down to the farmers. Um, so, a lot of them have put their farming in the fallow ground, and, um, it's going to be questionable as to how long it can be left that way, because if they don't farm it after a certain period of time, then the, the state and EPA is not going to let them farm it anymore. It's kind of like our dairies. If they close it down, it will never be able to be opened back up as a dairy again. Um, there was discussion about, uh- There was discussion about, you know, the impact on drought and water. There was also discussion about wildfire prevention, and we had the U.S. Forestry Department there as well as Cal Fire. And of course, with the feds, they have different regulations that the state cannot impose on them. Cal Fire, they still have to go through a CEQA process, just as we do when we have projects that we have to engage in here in the city. And for them to obtain permits under CEQA can sometimes take a year to a year and a half to do that. So it can be quite frustrating for them, especially with them trying to clear out the dead underbrush and the dead trees in our forest. And of course, you know, one of the systems that I really admire about the board is that they have a system called STAR, which is an acronym for service, teamwork, attitude, and respect. And it's really a unique system for the employees that sit, that are employed by the district as to how they operate, how they interact with each other, respect that they have for each other, the service that they provide to the community and the outreach. It's really remarkable how they're able to make that whole system work. So I just, you know, wanted to give the community an update on that. And, you know, as a person being elected to sit on this committee, I feel like it's a privilege for me to come back and give you whatever information and update on what I've learned there. So we, you know, our farmers, you know, I still think that, you know, they're kind of dealt a raw end here because there are just so many regulations that they have to overcome. And it appears, we had one farmer that is farming over six hundred thousand acres for what I found out was a company that's out of Germany. They now own the land here in our valley. And our small farmers, and I'll give an example, the raisin farmers are not able to use raisin trays to lay out their raisins and the grapes to dry anymore. They have to invest in specialized paper to lay out their raisins to dry. And so the big companies that buy their products are trying to help them to stay alive so that they can produce the raisins for consumption by people who buy them. So as the regulations get stiffer, our small farmers are selling their farms, and then these conglomerates who are out of the country of the United States are moving in to buy up the farmland. So I'm, you know, I'm just going to tell it like it is. I won't cover it or make it sound pretty. It is what it is, and this is what we're facing here in the United States. And the food that's grown in the San Joaquin Valley feeds most of the United States and a lot of the world. So it really is upsetting for me to see our local farmers being put out of business and have so many restrictions put on them. And the minute, and again, as I said, they meet them, and then the environmentalists come in, and they lawyer up and find more ways to restrict our farmers. So that's my report on that. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Do you want to go ahead and start with your counsel request? Your counsel report?
Oh, okay. Well, I just want to reiterate, I'm hoping maybe there's, without having, bringing this back to council again, that, as I stated earlier in the item that I pulled on the consent agenda, if we can figure out some sort of way to bring back levels. And I know there's, with the landscaping, there's a lot of variableness in there because we have districts within the city that don't pan to landscape and lighting. There are some districts that are financially healthier than other districts. But I think as a whole, what I'm looking at is, I want to see the basics of what three levels of service will bring us, and then financially, what it will cost us. And again, I know those variables are there for the various landscape and lighting districts, but I want to see us, again, step up our landscaping process. Because I, you know, we've had some new landscaping done here recently, and I see dying vegetation already. I see where a tree has been planted, and there's some overgrowth of private property trees where that tree was planted. So those two trees are going to grow into each other. And it's like, you know, I just kind of wonder how somebody would plant a tree where there's another tree that's growing over that area, and there wasn't consideration for that. And we had, I think, a letter tonight from a resident who was concerned about their private vegetation that was cut away. And if we have vegetation from a resident that's encroaching, you know, the space where a city has to do planting, I think we owe it to those residents to approach them and say, hey, we're going to be re-landscaping this area. You have vegetation that's overgrown into the space, the airspace of the city, and we'd like you to take care of that, rather than just mowing it down. Because I know that happened to me, where I had a resident that lived in a house behind me. They liked the tree canopy that I had that covered their space to give them shade. But then another person bought it, and they didn't like it. And I came home from the veteran memorial service at the national cemetery, and half my tree was gone. And they never discussed it with me to give me an opportunity to rectify the problem. So for me, that would be good customer services, to just talk to the resident who may have a problem or issue with their trees. I just have one other thing, and I'm hoping this was a major oversight. We had our veterans parade here recently, and I'm really grateful that the veterans were able to start the parade up again. It's been wonderful for our community. I remember when the chamber had their first comeback, and it was a virtual parade that we had. But it was something for the community to get out and to enjoy. But we had a situation, I talked to our staff about what announcement they sent out to be read for the two booths that were out there. And it was just a general statement of thank you, you know, from the city of Los Manos and the council for the veterans putting on the parade. But we had a situation where one of our council members, we have two council members that are veterans. One of our council members had a biography that was read, and the other council member didn't have one that was read. And so I asked that council member, were you approached, or did anybody ask you about a biography? And the answer to me was no. So we have to be careful to give equal application because the council member that didn't get the biography in was a twenty-year veteran in the Marines, and he serves as the county coordinator for the veterans in Merced County. And I just want to make sure that if it's an oversight, that, you know, we don't do that again. Because as a city, under Title Six, we have to be cognizant of that kind of possible behavior. And so, again, I want to thank the veterans for putting on the parade. But I, you know, I felt badly for Mr. Yamas that he did not have a biography that was read. And he has given twenty years, probably more than that, of his life in service to our government and to our nation, and also a member of the V F W. So that was, you know, I stopped the captain who was driving our fire truck at the second station so that we could recognize Mr. Yamas to make sure that at least the people heard that he was a veteran on the fire truck as well. So that's all the report I have on Mr. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Mr. Lovas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. Well, I want to thank the city staff for their dedication, both current and former staff members. It's been a fantastic ride, fantastic privilege to sit here and serve alongside with you, serve our residents in this capacity. It's been a fantastic opportunity. I thank God for it, that it came right at the right time as my retirement came up. And I thank the council members who warded me in. Tried to do my duty as I saw fit, according to the information, to my duty as a, to the, my sworn duty to the Constitution. I try to follow precedents. I try to follow the law. And again, I made decisions not based on political expediency or if they were going to be favorable, but based on what my understanding of the information at the time that it was given to me. Many key accomplishments were done under this city council, even though we had some challenges, and people said, well, the sky is going to fall down. We're going to fall off the edge of the earth. And that didn't happen. City business continued to function. The city continued to function. Checks were issued. Work was done. And that was because, mainly because of our staff. So again, thank you to our staff. One item that I really, I wish we'd taken more action on was the homeless encampment. Unfortunately, we have residents who are suffering mental distress. They are being invaded in their home, their personal effects, constantly. And again, this was because of, we just didn't think through this problem. We didn't collaborate. We didn't talk to other folks that maybe had some insight into whether or not this was the best possible solution. Now we're stuck with it, and hopefully we can work through this again collaboratively and as quickly as possible to provide these folks some relief. Because, again, our primary responsibility is public safety. And in that respect, we're not providing public safety to these residents who, again, were not consulted in this project. And again, we learn from it and we move on. Tiny homes. I think tiny homes, I think hopefully the staff will, again, with the new additional staff, they're going to provide that key knowledge to decide whether or not it's tiny homes or the motel. I believe that tiny homes is a better project, but again, we'll leave that to future decision-makers to decide on the course of action. I'd like to talk a little bit about our Chamber of Commerce. Our Chamber of Commerce is in dire straits. They are a key network in helping our businesses establish themselves, network with one another to notify the residents of, say, a grand opening, a special event. They coordinate a lot of our festivals, so they're a vital component in our revitalization of our business community. And if we're spending money on the downtown, we should also consider some kind of assistance to the Chamber of Commerce from some of our ARPA loans or monies so to help them, because they're really in a dire situation. So hopefully, that's something that the future council members or council can consider. Finally, I'd like to congratulate Mr. Begonia. I don't know him, but I've met him once. He seemed to be a nice man. I think his intentions are good. I look forward to him being seated, and I look forward to him being successful because his success is our success. And I hope that people will give him an opportunity to be accustomed, to be familiarized himself with the position because there is a lot to learn. Even though I served on a planning commission, parks recreation, school oversight board, there's a tremendous amount to learn. And again, I'll go back to staff for bearing with my ridiculous questions and say, wait a minute, we just covered that. Why is he asking that again? So, but please give him your same patience that you gave me because he's going to need it in order for him to make good decisions. So again, I congratulate him, and I look forward to him being seated. Now we go to Mr. Wellman. Mr. Wellman, thank you very much for your tremendous service to the city, the things you've done specifically with the collaboration effort with our key water stakeholders. I think that's magnificent. I think that's going to set the city up for future success, identifying key issues, working with staff, gelling them together, sometimes asking a little much from them, but I appreciate your wanting to do as much as possible in the short time that you're here. To the Veterans Day Parade, I hold no ill. Those things happen. I know firsthand now that, since I was in charge of the Merced County Parade, those things happen. So there's no ill will here. I appreciate the work that you did. I appreciate Chief Hugh for inviting us to the parade. I appreciate the hard work that goes into it. Again, I know firsthand now, so those things happen. I look forward to next year's parade. I hope it's bigger. And please, if I can do anything from the county to assist you, I'm there for you. I think it's a collaborative effort, and we're helping our veterans. So anything I can do to assist you, please don't hesitate to call me. And that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lovas. Well said. And Mr. Jones?
No report, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. I just want to thank staff. Great reports tonight. I think we, you know, we're up here, we're out here. We don't only think about our residents of our city, but we do care about our city employees also. And it showed tonight. Also have one other little flyer here. It's going to be for, it's going to be our, "The Los Manos City Council invites you to the Twenty-Sixth Annual Holiday Open House, December seventh, 2022, from four-thirty to six P M. In the City Hall. Address is five-twenty J Street, Los Manos, California. Refreshments will be served." The city council meeting to start at six P M. That's all I have. And now I will entertain a motion for adjournment. Councilmember Jones?
So moved.
Second?
I'll take that.
Mr. Lovas, all in favor?
Aye.
All in, no's. Meeting is adjourned at eight oh-two.